Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the planning board meeting for November 15, 2022. My name is Carrie Monnik. I'm Chair of the Planning Board. Before we get started, I'd like to read a few announcements. This open meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during a state of emergency, signed into law on July 16, 2022. All members of the Planning Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Planning Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with deliberations of the board. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northboro Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure private participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting may feature public comment. Confirming board members and persons participating in the agenda are remotely present can be heard. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Bill Pierce?
Aye.
Amy Fresky?
Here.
Millie Milton?
Here.
Anthony Zaitin?
Here.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors?
Here.
Hey, for presenters and applicants on the agenda, the chair will invite each speaker or applicant to, by name, to make presentations and speak to their application. Participants will follow, will provide their full name and hold until the name is called. Each speaker will ask, will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others, do so through the chair, taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the board will be conducted by roll call vote. For public comment by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please note party or phone number will be visible to those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, click Raise Hand on the bottom of your screen, wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has listed public commentary, the chair will call on each by name and afford approximately three minutes. This meeting will have executive session. Okay, so with that, the first item on our agenda this evening is executive session relating to litigation. I declare under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, that the purpose of the executive session will be to discuss strategy regarding pending litigation concerning the property at 0 and 301 Bartlett Street, known as Gutierrez Company versus Northboro Planning Board, Land Corps case number 21 MISC 000046, and that discussion of the foregoing in open session could have a detrimental effect on the litigating and/or negotiating position of the town. I will ask for a motion to go into executive session under Chapter 30a, Section 21a3, for the purposes and reasons declared by the chair, and to return to open session at the conclusion of executive session.
Some of.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Bill?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Millie?
Aye.
Anthony?
You're muted.
I was, yep. Aye.
And Carrie's an aye. Okay, so the board will move into executive session and will return back for public session at the close of the executive session. Thanks so much.
Okay, that's talking about affordable.
So the way it works is it's either 750 or whatever your percentage is if it's 10% if you're above that. So the minimum is 750 units.
Okay, because our 10% would have been 589.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. So it does not have to all be in one parcel, but the smallest parcel allowed is five contiguous acres. And we showed this one before in the springtime, different possible types of multifamily development that could be considered to meet this requirement of 15 dwelling units per acre. DHCD is developing a compliance model that will take information from GIS as well as zoning requirements, put it into an Excel workbook, and it will help to compute a reasonable estimate of what the unit capacity for the proposed parcel is. And as Lori mentioned, CMRC is available for technical assistance and DHCD and Mass Housing Partnership will also have technical assistance available. So it could be that the towns tap into different funding sources for different aspects of meeting this compliance. There's just a little graphic showing how the compliance model will take the mapping information from GIS, the zoning, and then result in the estimate. According to this, as of 2020, whoops, wrong one, sorry, Northborough had 5,897 housing units. The minimum multifamily unit capacity is 750 over 50 acres of land. So the next thing that needs to be done is to submit an action plan by January 31st. That's not having your zoning in place. It is just a plan for how you propose to meet the compliance requirement. And then as an adjacent community in Northborough, we'll have until December 31st, 2024 to be in compliance. So the next steps, I think, is to talk about some possible sites. I know Lori has a few in mind. Consider what type of zoning we want to look at, whether it's an overlay district versus a base zoning district. Use the compliance model to determine the unit capacity and then develop and submit the action plan by the end of January. And with that, I think, I don't know if Lori's going to need to refer to this or if I should stop sharing while she talks about some potential site.
Yeah, if you could stop sharing and then I will share my screen. I have. I did have the GIS all queued up. Now it's not looking like it's there anymore. So just bear with me a minute while I get that, get that going. So. Here it is. One thing I learned at the class I went to this last month that Lori already knows too, is what I heard is with the 15 units, if you have a big parcel, you could do like 20 units in the front of the parcel and like five units in the back or vice versa. Like every part of the parcel doesn't have to be 15. You can split it up. Yes, and the other interesting thing, so I've been attending the various workshops put on by MHP. And they've been super helpful. And one of the workshops, we're talking about having different densities for different areas. So one of the things that I found intriguing is if we decide to go with, say, two areas, one area in the downtown and then one area further afield. And I know I've briefly spoken to you about a couple of potential sites. We could vary the densities. So for example, in the downtown area, we could aim for a lower density of, say, 10 units per acre. And then in the area over by Route 20, if we selected these locations, so the two potential locations, one is the playing fields location. So this is 353 Southwest Cut Off. And they also own an adjacent area, although I heard a rumor that they may have sold this piece within the last week or two. But this is a potential site where the property owner is very interested in doing multifamily homes. So the property owner has contacted me. We did have a preliminary discussion about what type of multifamily housing they'd be interested in doing. And what they're interested in is luxury housing, garden style. And they are interested in having, of course, an open space unit component as well as some small scale retail. They were talking about maybe like restaurant space. So this is a potential site that we could consider. I'm sorry?
Did they say how many units they were planning? Are they going to do the whole 15 per acre?
You know, they were showing me some examples of developments they have provided, they have done else.
Okay, cuz our ten percent would have been five eighty-nine.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Um, so it does not have to all be in one parcel, um but the smallest parcel um allowed is five contiguous acres. Um, and we showed this one before in the springtime, um different possible types of uh multifamily development that could be considered to meet this requirement um of fifteen dwelling units per acre. Um, DHCD is developing a compliance model um that will take information from GIS as well as zoning requirements, put it into an Excel workbook. And it will help to compute a reasonable estimate of what the unit capacity for the proposed parcels. Is um and as Lori mentioned, CMR PC is available for technical assistance. And DHCD and Mass Housing Partnership will also have technical assistance available, so it could be that the towns tap into different funding sources for different aspects of meeting this compliance. This is just a little graphic showing um how the compliance model will take the mapping information from GIS, the zoning um and then result in the in the estimate. According to this, as of twenty twenty, whoops, wrong one, sorry, uh, Northborough had five thousand eight hundred ninety-seven housing units. Um, the minimum uh multifamily unit capacity is seven fifty uh over fifty acres of land. So the next um thing that needs to be done uh is to submit an action plan by January thirty-first. Um, that's not having your zoning in place. Um, it is just a plan for how you propose to meet um the compliance requirement. And then as an adjacent community, Northborough will have until December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four to uh be in compliance. So the next steps, I think, is to um talk about some possible sites. I know Lori has a few in mind. Consider what type of zoning we wanna look at, whether it's an overlay district versus a base zoning district. Um, use the compliance model to determine the unit capacity and then develop and submit the action plan by the end of January. And with that, um, I think I don't know if Lori's gonna need to refer to this or if I should stop sharing while she talks about some potential site.
Yeah, if you could stop sharing and then I will share my screen. I have um I did have the GIS all queued up. Uh, now it's not looking like it's there anymore, so just bear with me a minute while I uh I get that. Get that going, so. Uh, here it is.
One thing I learned at the class I went to this last month that Lori already knows too is what I heard is with the fifteen units, if you have a big parcel, you could do like twenty units in the front of the parcel and like five units in the back or vice versa. Like every part of the parcel doesn't have to be fifteen, you can split it up.
Yes, and the other interesting thing, um, so I've been attending the various uh workshops uh put on by MHP and uh they've been super helpful. And one of the workshops, we're talking about having different densities for different areas. So one of the things that I found intriguing is um if we decide to to go with, say, two areas. Um, one area in the downtown and then one area further afield. Uh, and I I know I've briefly spoken to you about a couple of potential sites. Um, we could vary the densities. So for example, in the downtown area, we could aim for a lower density of, say, um ten units per acre. And then in um the area over by Route twenty, if we selected these locations, so the two potential locations. One is um the playing fields location. Uh, so this is three fifty-three southwest cutoff. Um, and they also own an adjacent area, although I heard a rumor that they may have uh sold this piece uh within the last week or two. But um this is a potential site um where the property owner is very interested in doing multifamily homes. So the property owner has contacted me. Uh, we did have a preliminary discussion about what type of multifamily housing they'd be interested in doing. Um, and what they're interested in is luxury housing, uh garden style. Um, and they are interested in having, of course, an open space unit uh component as well as um some small scale retail. They were talking about maybe like restaurant space. So this is a potential site uh that we could consider. I'm sorry.
Did they say how many units they were planning? Are they gonna do the whole fifteen per acre?
You know, um, they were showing me some examples of developments they have provided, uh they have done elsewhere. Um, so I I can't remember if they had specified exactly how many units they're interested in doing, but they are certainly willing to talk to the planning board about their plans. Um, so they approached me maybe about two or three weeks ago and asked if uh if the planning board would be interested in a preliminary discussion.
How many acres do you have?
So this parcel right here has twenty-two acres. So if you remember, we have to do fifty acres. Um, so at least one area has to be a minimum of twenty-five acres, as Jane had mentioned. And then the other area can be something less than that. So uh they have this parcel and they have the parcel next door, or at least they did, that's six point five two acres. Um, so then another potential site is uh the gravel pit, of course. Um, so one of the reasons why this area is intriguing to me is because, of course, it's a blank slate. It's much larger than what we would need for our overlay district. Um, so of course, it's made up of several different parcels. So there would be the opportunity to do a combo. Um, so it could be a combo of uh multifamily development as well as like retail, you know, restaurant space. Obviously, it's a a stone's throw from Northborough Crossing. Um, and of course, uh it sees a lot of traffic cuz it's right on Route twenty. Um, and it's very close to the Avalon facility. So it would make sense. I mean, of course, it is also the last large area of industrially zoned land. Um, so if we use it for multifamily homes and uh commercial uses, then that means that it wouldn't be available for industrial uses. So uh some people might rejoice at that. Um, but others might not because of the tax revenue. So then I wanted to show you the downtown location that intrigues me. Go down the address up. All right. So just to orient you, uh, this is the town hall right here. Um, so this property right here is Trinity Church. Uh, this is Hudson Street. Um, so there are a couple of interesting properties. I understand uh that this property right here uh which is ten acres is owned by Northborough Harvey Holdings. And it's currently used uh for dumpster storage, I believe. Um, so at one point, I understand this was proposed for a supermarket. So this, I think, would be a much more appropriate uh use uh for multifamily uh than it would be for dumpster storage in our downtown. Um, there are some challenges. Uh, I'm gonna put put some of the overlay districts here. So it is in the floodplain. Um, so that would be a limiting factor for developments, of course. Uh, but of course, it's much easier to do like a lower density multifamily development in here uh than, so that's, you know, part of what I was saying that intrigues me about the potential of the overlay district is that we could go lower density in one area and then higher density in the other area of the uh overlay district. So I'm gonna also point out to you another parcel that's of interest to me, uh, that's fifty-six Hudson Street. And of course, uh, you, uh, this was recently approved for uh some modifications to the existing industrial facility. It's also office space. So I don't anticipate that it'll turn over in the near future, which would also be nice. Because, of course, I'm sure nobody wants to see a huge influx of multifamily builds all at once. Uh, that wouldn't be great for municipal services. Um, but this parcel right here and the parcel across the street. So the parcel across the street is owned by the same folks. And they own the parking lot and they also own the hill behind. Uh, so when you combine these parcels together, you get pretty much twenty-five acres of land. Um. So one of the things that I really like about having more multifamily in our downtown area is that if we wanna do a downtown revitalization and create a more pedestrian-friendly downtown, then we're gonna need a core of uh residents within a quarter mile walking distance of our our new downtown to support those businesses. And so this would uh provide us with that additional core of uh patrons for these uh downtown businesses. Another thing is, uh, you know, we're in the very, very early stages of our downtown revitalization project and we haven't started our visioning yet. But areas, streets of particular interest for their redevelopment potential are Blake Street, Pier Street, and um this area of Hudson. So there is potential uh to do infill developments in this area as well. Um, so what uh what I was thinking more for this area is definitely mixed use. Uh, so there could be the potential of having retail on the first floor and then having apartments above um that more like a traditional, you know, downtown that we have all over Massachusetts. Um, so at this point, I I guess I'd be interested in hearing your feedback. What do you, what do you think of these locations? Uh, what's your, what's your initial brainstorm here?
What feedback?
I have a sound, but if someone else wants to go first, they can.
I see Bill. Bill, what do you have there?
I'll go first. Um, I like the downtown idea. Uh, one thing, one question I have is we still, I mean, we only have to zone for it, right? We don't have to actually wait for somebody who wants to build. All we have to do is zone, and if they build, they build. If they don't, they don't.
You are correct, absolutely. So you're just kinda setting the stage.
Right.
Uh, so what we wanna do is we wanna make sure we have, we have this opportunity. So we wanna make sure that uh we plan proactively in a way that it will ultimately benefit the town of Northborough. So we wanna minimize the harmful impacts. And we want to um, you know, set, set ourselves up for success. So we have this opportunity with the downtown revitalization. Um, so it it can work kinda hand in hand.
Right, but what I don't wanna do too is I don't wanna sort of override what the downtown revitalization is trying to do by zoning something that they're not prepared for.
And and do you think that, um, oh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay. Uh, do you think that a mixed use would um be such a zone? Bill, just out of curiosity.
Um, I don't, I don't think a mixed use would be, um. But a- again, we don't have, you know, we're sort of waiting on the the report and everything else. You know, we tried to do signs and lights and everything else and we're told we gotta wait for the report. You know, but we have a limited timeframe to get this one done. So, you know, i- if we're looking that we have to have an action plan in a couple months, um, you know, we're not gonna have the report back before then to tell us, you know, or or the master plan to tell us what their plan is. So I don't wanna set up an action plan and then all of a sudden we've gotta back out because you know, we're doing, something else has been decided by the master plan committee.
So I did download the action plan because I was very curious as to what type of lift it was. And it's a real light lift. Um, so they're not asking for a lot of information. So essentially, what they are interested in knowing is that we're working on it. You know, that we're not ignoring the fact that uh we have this obligation. And that we're thinking about potential locations. So the action and also that we have thought of a timeline. So we have certain goals in mind. So they do ask for locations, but we're not um they're not set in stone.
Right.
So if we decide through the course of the planning process that this other location makes more sense, then, you know, we can shift gears. We're not gonna get penalized in any way.
Mm-hmm.
Do we wanna stop? I mean, do you, do you pick a bunch of locations and end up with a like a hundred acres that could potentially be used or do you wanna keep it like locked down to about fifty so you don't have overdevelopment? Does that, does that make sense?
We could do any area that's larger than fifty acres, certainly, like if, for example, we decided that we wanted to tackle the entire um gravel pit. Then, and we wanted to do something downtown, then we could do that. So we could, we could do more. I guess the key is we just can't do less.
Yeah.
Uh, so fifty acres is like the minimum that they will accept.
And the, and the gravel pit is, it's less than fifty though, right? I think it's closer to forty-ish.
I think it's like, uh, gosh, is it forty? I can't remember off the top of my head. I I added it up once upon a time. It's, I I can't remember. It's, it's between forty and like forty-five and fifty-two, I believe.
Did we determine that Avalon is sort of part of this and covers us a little bit or?
So then I'm waiting to hear. Um, so there's a, there's a little bit of a monkey wrench that was thrown in uh that was discussed at one of the CMR PC workshops. And it was touched on a little bit during one of the MHP workshops. And there was a comment having to do with chapter forty B developments.
Mm-hmm.
And Amy can probably speak to it better than I um about the possibility that we would lose our ability to count those units on our subsidized housing inventory, which of course would be terrible. So um I have asked for clarification. And uh Jane, Jane was part of that. And uh Trish Sattles from CMR PC is looking into it and uh said that she would get back to us when she had more information.
So are you saying that if we chose to use it as our, our, our density? Um. Housing that we would lose it as our forty B?
I, it's, it's not clear. So
Okay.
I guess the long and short of it is that we may or we may not be able to use Avalon.
Okay.
Within our overlay district. If there's gonna be any risk to the chapter forty B units being counted on our subsidized housing inventory, then I would absolutely say, no, we cannot include Avalon.
Right.
Yep, I think we're all in agreement there.
And the other thing, I think I asked about this before and I can't remember what the answer was, was the, what about the um like the Coleman House or any of those rehab facilities?
Once again, the same.
Okay.
If, if it's gonna negatively impact our affordable housing, we will not include those.
Okay.
But, you know, we can I guess that's kinda information that I wanna know for you, from you. Like, are you interested in doing absolutely the minimum necessary to comply? Or are you open to maybe doing more than fifty acres if it makes sense? Um, yeah, what are your, what are your initial thoughts?
Well, I, I guess my thought is that we can do the fifty acres as the minimum and add more if we find it to be more beneficial.
Yeah, and my only concern and the one thing we've gotta keep, remember here is this is by right. Right, so they won't come in front of the planning board. They won't come in front of any boards for approvals.
Mm-hmm. No, that's not true. Um, so the way it goes is it wouldn't be a special permit, so that means that you wouldn't really have the power to deny. Uh, but we would absolutely put design standards on there. And it would go through site plan review. So uh, it would have the ability to go through the design review committee. Um, and absolutely site plan review. I would never recommend that we go forward with a multi, a large-scale multifamily development without site plan review. I think that would be a mistake. And of course, I would recommend to go to the planning board versus the zoning board of appeals.
Other thoughts on whether it's minimum or more?
I, I was for minimum and even putting it on Avalon if it is accepted. Because seven hundred and fifty units is upping our housing by twelve point nine percent. That's a lot, especially for the schools. My kids were in Proctor when Avalon came in and that was what, three hundred and ninety-four units? And it really crowded out our schools. And I listened to the selectmen's discussion on this too and there's a big concern with municipal services, with schools, like we may do the fifty acres and seven hundred and fifty units and then we'll get a grant for a couple million dollars but have to build a forty, fifty million dollar school.
Right.
I think we have to be careful with that. We have to get school numbers. Like when I go to the classes, what I'm hearing from other towns, they're definitely trying to find ways to mitigate it a little and not have to overcrowd their town.
Mm-hmm.
And then for downtown, I think for downtown, I would like a mixture of housing and businesses cuz if we use up our big parcels for all housing, then there won't be any room for businesses to go in for the people to visit. Like, I feel like we have a summer street, school street. We have a lot of houses down there. And I think, you know, some mixed use housing and could work, but I think if we fill up big parcels with all housing,
Mm-hmm.
then there's nothing, there's not a lot to visit.
So Lori, is there any type of uh data or information on the types of people that go into a mixed use uh living situation? What is what is the age group? What is the, the general um population that seeks out mi- mixed use housing? Is there, is there?
I can speak more um to like garden style versus um versus the like townhouse type developments. So my, in my experience in townhouse type development, so those are uh developments that have mostly duplexes. Um, what I've seen are triplexes or fourplexes. Those tend to be largely populated by fifty-five and over folks.
But I, that, I don't call that mixed use.
So I don't really have a lot of experience of, you know, um construction of retail on the first floor and then apartments above. I would suspect that the people who are going in there are probably young professionals. I can't say that with certainty because I haven't experienced with that type of construction. It's kind of unusual.
Yeah, I think it's worth getting some data on that to find out who that target audience is and see if that's even a viable option for our downtown. I don't imagine too many, you know, twenty-eight year olds or twenty-nine year olds want to live in our downtown the way it is right now. There's, there's nothing for them to do.
Well, we approved ninety West Main Street and eighty-seven or seventy-seven West Main Street. And those all had three bedrooms. So they're probably going to be families because someone who's a young single person probably won't want to pay the high rents of a three bedroom.
Right. So I'm just trying to get an idea of what is our, like if you're in a mixed use in the downtown area, what are, what are we looking at? And is it even a viable? You know, option. It's a great idea if there's a population that wants it, but who would that population be? And would they want to be in our, in our vicinity?
I don't know about your twenty-year-olds, but my twenty-year-olds did not want to. Even if there was an apartment, they're like, I'm out of here for a while. They might come back, but
Yeah, that's
They definitely didn't look in Northborough.
That, and that's kind of what I'm getting at is what is our target, target here?
I, I do, I can speak to, um, so I'm familiar with a, like mill redevelopments. Yeah. And in those circumstances, a lot of, a lot of the occupants are, believe it or not, disabled folks. So, you know, th- this particular, um, construction had an elevator. So it was, uh, three levels. So you would get, uh, senior citizens and others who had some sort of mobility issue, whether they were blind or wheelchair or so there was a certain number of, uh, low income folks because there was a portion of the units that were low income. And then there were a number of recently divorced, single people. Um, so with and without children. And professionals, like just single professionals who weren't married. There weren't a lot of children, very few.
A parcel could be the town hall that you guys are in. Cause we always thought if there was a new town hall, the old town hall would be apartments. You know, they have an elevator. They have a little gym at the bottom. There was always discussion that that could be housing for disabled or seniors or, and there was a kitchen downstairs.
Yeah. Yeah, I have actually toyed with the idea of including the town hall within there. Um, I know that was something that, uh, John Kader has mentioned to me that if the town hall ends up moving, then, uh, that was something that they'd like to do. You know, give the town hall to the housing authority to create affordable housing. So in that circumstance, uh, certainly it would be totally appropriate to include it in the multifamily district because we could get a lot of units on a very small footprint building.
How many acres? You know, it's six, it's probably not very many acres, right? Oh, you have it right there.
I was gonna say, I see it.
No, I just have to get that out of the way so I can move down. So it's just shy of two acres.
Okay.
But I, I do like that idea. And the other great thing is you already have that, uh, place space as well.
Yep.
Right, for kids.
Yep.
And it's attached to the other housing authority buildings.
Yep. Yeah, and that was the intriguing thing about this mill building too. Is that you already have the building, so it would be an adaptive reuse of an existing building. So however many units you could fit in that building is what you would get.
I think that would be a good parcel. I would hope that the Harvey parcel would be a mix though, because I think it'd be great to have little shops and restaurants.
Yeah. Could have like a little cafe overlooking the river.
Right. Maybe some mixed use. The hard thing is, like Bill mentioned, it's by right. So once you open it up.
Anthony, thoughts from you on this one?
I think my initial thoughts are, you know, just really a mix of downtown and then some down by Shops Way. And then get to that fifty and I'd say then stop there and see how it goes.
So are you, um, are folks amenable to kind of splitting it in two? So trying to, to get to the twenty-five acres, uh, in the downtown vicinity and then doing the balance over by, uh, Shops Way.
Yeah, I think so. I think that, that sort of helps spread it out as well, uh, in the community. So that, you know, we're not overwhelmed with one district, especially like Amy mentioned with the schools. Right? We sort of spread it out a little bit. So it's not, it's not all F, you know, one school. And maybe, you know, we can spread it out a little bit more that way.
But wait, when you say over by Shops Way, we're still not talking Avalon. In my opinion, I'd love to see first what we get out of Avalon and what we can, what do we already have covered?
Right.
I can, um, yeah, I'll write that down and so we'll see what we could do with Avalon first. And, um, so of course, if we put it over Avalon, so remember right now Avalon is about, uh, nine, ten units per acre. So this would require us to increase the density. So there would have to be more units within the Avalon development.
Well, we could just do more units per acre somewhere else to make a difference.
True.
And is there any extra land to add over there? So it hits the, I thought you had to allow fifteen units per acre. So even though Avalon right now is only ten units per acre, if we allow fifteen units per acre, whether or not they can build it, it would cover.
Yeah, but that, so the density would be, uh, you know, fifteen units per acre. Uh, so a couple of different things we could do. So we could include Avalon and kind of make it density neutral. And then have more density in the downtown to offset it. So if we wanted to say, okay, well, we've got ten units per acre in the Avalon development. So we're going to include twenty-five acres of, you know, the forty-two acres in Avalon. And then we're going to allow twenty units per acre in the downtown. So we have twenty-five acres that we're trying to rezone in the downtown, but we're going to go even denser there. So that's, that's a possibility. Or maybe what we could do is we could include a portion, like a smaller portion of Avalon and adjacent land. So maybe it's like ten acres of Avalon at, uh, the ten units per acre. And then, uh, let me move back to the other area. So we can look at the aerial photo.
How many acres is Avalon again?
It's like forty-two acres.
Oh, so can we just use those forty-two acres at fifteen units? And then we only need eight more acres?
Yeah, uh, so here's Avalon. One, let me click on it. That's being difficult. All right. So I don't know why it's not letting me click. Or select.
I think, are you outside of town? Are you at the right place?
All right.
Yeah, right there. Wait, no, um.
I think it's this one, right?
Yep, that's it.
Yeah, there we go. So that's probably why I couldn't click. You're right. I was on the wrong place. Okay, so this area right here is out of town. So we would have to go with a budding land. Now, we have to demonstrate that the land is actually buildable. So we can't just take a wetlands and say, hey, this is our area.
But can't you take the forty-two acres of Avalon? Like, do you need the backyard? Can you take the forty-two acres of Avalon and then do eight acres somewhere downtown?
Well, the problem, the problem is that it's not the proper density.
But I think you just have to say we'd allow fifteen per acre and they would have the choice of adding more if it ever got torn down. Like, I don't know.
So the key is like, if we're choosing an additional, uh, an existing area, we have to demonstrate that there's capacity. Um, so if it's all steep slopes and it's wetlands, then we're not going to be able to demonstrate that we can get to fifteen units per acre. You see what I'm saying?
I wonder what the tool would show.
So I'm looking right here and I'm seeing lots of steep slopes.
Yeah, that's the same with fifty-six Hudson too. If you ever went up across the street, it's all ledge and it is very steep.
I guess I, and for me, I heard the tools are coming out before Thanksgiving. Like we could see what the tool says, could be done there and see if they accept it.
Yeah, I'm looking for probably gone by it like three times. I'm looking for the wetlands later. Oh, here it is. All right, so we got, we don't have wetlands over here, so that's good. So I'm going to take that topography off because it's distracting. Yeah, I mean, the minimum size of the, an overlay is five acres. So we could potentially do three areas. Um, so one area, small. But, all right, well, at least it gave me some food for thought. Does it, anybody else have any other, I, this area right here? Are you interested in having a little discussion with this developer to see what they're interested in doing?
Um, what, is that the one that's twenty-two acres?
Uh, this is the one. Yes, twenty-two acres.
I don't know, what do you guys think?
I don't know. I almost hate to lead them down that road.
I agree with Amy on that, sort of.
Okay, so no, no discussion with, uh, three fifty-three Southwest cut off at this time.
Well, do we at least, if he has actual plans and like what it looks like, do we at least want to get our bearings on like what this equates to even visually or?
Yeah, I think you have to have a discussion.
If he has, and we're willing to, to look at it, it's not that we're not willing to look at it, it's just we're not gonna, you know, zone specifically for that.
So I can tell them that not going to commit, but curious as to what they're thinking.
I mean, I don't, it's up to the board. I'm fine with it. If the majority is against it, that's okay too. It's just, Amy, you're not, you're not, you don't want to.
Well, it's own commercial right now, but I'm, I mean, I guess I'd be open to it, but not making any promises. Just, you know, it could be anything. Who knows what they're going to say. But I know if they want the MBTA community, they're going to want at least probably fifteen units per acre. It's going to probably be high density, I would think, but I'm guessing so. Like the others said, if they want to come in with no promises.
Millie, Bill, Anthony, do you want to at least see what they're saying?
Yeah, absolutely. You have to, for sure.
Okay, then I will, uh, ask, so Marshall Gould is representing the applicant. So I will let him know that you're open to the conversation. No promise.
You didn't tell us it was Marshall first.
I'm only two.
All right. So does anybody have anything else that you'd like to ask? Or you'd like to talk about with the multifamily, the MBTA?
Yeah, I mean, are we at a point where as we kind of spiral towards the time where we're going to be having public hearings and all of that? Where it's even feasible to come out this year? Are we talking for next year? Like doing this investigative research for the following town meeting?
I was thinking for the following town meeting. I, I really don't want to rush it. You know, I want to go through the visioning exercises with downtown. Because that might alter the parcels that are included in, uh, the downtown version. And, uh, really make sure that we get everything right as far as design standards are concerned and, uh, appropriate uses that we want to see. You know, if we want to have a retail office component mixed use. So that, that would be my suggestion is to aim for the, uh, spring two thousand twenty-four town meeting.
Okay. Jane, any additional insight for, and we, I don't know if we cut off your presentation or if there's anything else you want to present? Or any comments based on what you're hearing or discussing?
Well, three of my colleagues were at a special training session today, including our mapping person and Trish and another, uh, one of our land use planners. And, um, apparently the compliance model just came up. I haven't seen it yet, but that's news I just got today. Um, so before Thanksgiving sounds, sounds right. I believe I read that you can't restrict the age for these districts. Um, and previous research that I had done showed that, and, and I wouldn't consider Northborough really an urban area, but it is, uh, mostly young professionals and retirees going more into downtown areas, mixed use areas. A lot of the retirees want to be able to walk to things. They want to be near culture. They want to be able to go to restaurants. So it's, it's funny that it's the two ends of the spectrum that you're seeing that, um, want those mixed use walkable areas.
Right. We just have to give them something to walk to.
Right. And they have to be affordable. Like I think, I don't know if the seniors, how much they want to pay. Or even young professionals. If we have like three from apartments, they get pretty pricey. They're more like the luxury.
Right.
And I think the, the retirees that are looking for this lifestyle are financially stable and
Oh, okay.
Can afford to do that. But, but there would be an affordability component for a certain percentage of these units.
Yeah, I think you'd have to because then we'll go below our ten percent. If we had too much housing, not enough affordable, then we're going to drop below.
Okay, great. Anything else? Jane, from your perspective?
No, no. As soon as we get access to the compliance model, we can start putting the information for these potential parcels in and see what information that provides and, uh, can come back to you with that information.
Okay, great. Any other board questions or anything from you, Lori?
Okay, thanks Jane. Really appreciate your time and presenting that. It's a lot. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to Lori for watching all those videos and going to all those classes. Thanks both of you.
It's interesting to see how others, uh, have, uh, tackled, uh, the whole multifamily option and I multifamily option. And I did like, uh, Judy Barrett had actually spoken about a project. I can't remember the town that it's in. But it was, uh, a mixture of like smaller scale multifamily at the street. So the units that were visible from the street were short and small. So it was like a fourplex, I wanna say. And then as you got deeper into the project, um, the, the buildings got taller. And so it didn't look out of place from the street. Uh, which I really, really liked. And they were able to ensure that with the design standards, so.
Definitely something to consider. Okay, good night, all.
Okay, so next we have, well, going along the same lines of the zoning bylaw amendments. Laurie, you had added a couple to your sheet and that's in your word document, the ones that are highlighted in red. Are those your new additions? Oops, you're just on mute there.
Yeah, sorry about that. So what I've been doing is, uh, of course taking notes every time.
Oops, you're on mute again.
Sorry. Make sure it stays on, uh, on, uh, my voice. So, um, the last time we had talked about the separating out that residential uses from the industrial. And so that's one of the new changes that I included in the most recent, uh, zoning update. And then the other thing is, uh, so I announced at the staff meeting this morning that we were interested in adopting the Mullins Rule. And, uh, everybody was pretty supportive, especially when I explained uh, the challenge that we have because we don't have an alternate. Um, and I don't think we particularly need an alternate if we adopt the Mullins Rule. And so I gave them the scenario that we encountered, um, a few months ago. And they were supportive of that. So that's the other article that I put forward. Um, it doesn't have to be anything fancy. It's just a matter of adopting, um, the, the regulation. Um, it's so it doesn't actually have to be language in the, uh, municipal code. Um, and then, like I said, in the decision, whenever it comes up, uh, you put language in the decision. I've been doing this for years and years. You know exactly the language to put in. Uh, referencing, you know, who missed the public hearing and, uh, that they had reviewed, uh, the materials. And there's a statement that the person has to read into the record before making a vote. Um, so that gives the applicant the ability to say, no, I don't want this person to vote on this particular project, but virtually nobody ever, ever has a problem with that person voting because they typically like to have the most, uh, people voting as they could possibly get. So it, it really is quite simple.
Okay, and is this an actual zoning bylaw? Would the planning board present this or does, who presents this bylaw?
I, I don't actually know. Uh, when I had mentioned it at this morning's meeting, uh, John, uh, certainly was, was open to it and he just asked me to provide the information. So I have already emailed him this text as well as, uh, the companion documents, uh, that I sent along that talks about chapter thirty-nine and section twenty-three D. So he has the information now. Um, so I'm not sure if that's something that he'll wanna handle at town meeting or something that he wants the planning board to handle. Um, I will find out and get back to you. Actually, I have a meeting scheduled with him tomorrow morning. So I'll try and iron that out with him.
Okay, um, so then we have the one in red. The first one I read in this word document is by law section seven zero five zero two zero. The, oh, is this the removal of residential and industrial? So taking the indus, the residential off an industrial lot?
So I just wanted to take that language, strike it all together from the zoning bylaw. And then, um, I just wanted to move up the bullet that was underneath that one up. So that'll be, uh, that'll replace number three.
Okay. Um, I have, alright, oh wait, there's another one in here that's red, too, isn't there? Yeah. Oh, no, that was the Mullins Rule. Okay, so just to go down what I have for my list, um, let's see, some of these are in the rules and regs. Um, we had a minimum area requirement for groundwater. Is that something? We'll just wait till five minutes.
Unfortunately, Fred went on vacation and, uh, he was, uh, he was very, uh, crazy busy before he left, so we, I was not able to sit down with him to work that out. So that, that is gonna wait until the next meeting.
Okay, so when Fred gets back, I just wanna update my next step there. Okay, um, some of this was, um, either in the rules and regs or subdivision, um. Let's see. Oh, we had a question last time and maybe we solved it, but I didn't write it down here. We had the definitions for internally lit and externally lit. We've put them out there, but do we decide we are not, we don't need to make changes to the use table? It's just the definitions at this point and that's okay to have the definition, but not a use assigned to it? A district assigned to it?
I think the definitions are gonna be in the signed bylaw area. It's not gonna be in the definitions in the front. Is that what you're thinking, Lori, or are they in the front?
Uh, no, they were in the signed bylaw.
So the sign bylaw has all different definitions in it. There is discussion of external and internally lit lights in the, in that section.
Okay, so we don't even need it. The use table is irrelevant.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we decided to wait on the wall signs as a percentage of the building to next year. Correct? We decided to wait to add the table of the signs till next year?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the common driveway bad reference is not in the bylaws. Stormwater language not in the, the bylaws. Um, let's see. When Fred gets back for that one. Okay, the, we got the lot coverage, ru- rules and regs we'll get to next. We also had the, um, the definition for light industrial. So I struggle with this one and I think, Laura, you asked a question about it, too.
Yes, I'm still, I'm still not clear on what exactly the problem is. So it's really difficult for me to understand the problem with the definition when I don't understand the overall problem. Uh, like what, what is it that you're not happy with? Like, wh- what specific uses are problematic? And are they problematic across the board or are they just problematic on Bartlett and Lyman Street?
Um, no, Bartlett, and then we have the Whitney Street, yeah.
Right, but that's specific zoning district. So of course, there are several different locations where there's the industrial district. But are you, are the uses that you're concerned about that are being allowed in under, I don't know if it's the light manufacturing or the light industrial category, are they problematic in just that one location of the industrial district? Or are they problematic across the board? Like, you don't wanna see these uses anywhere in town.
Um, I'll describe what I view as a problem, and it's actually on the others, it's on the Whitney Street side, not the Bartlett side. Which would be like we had a use like Staris come in and be defined as light manufacturing, which was a huge crux of our argument that we ultimately, the board did not think that was light manufacturing. Regardless, had this board not been here, that was defi, that was categorized, that kind of facility was categorized as light manufacturing. And that was within the, you know, a hundred feet of a neighborhood. So the problem is, is that we, we originally wanted to do like, okay, within X number of feet of a neighborhood, these uses are fine. You wanna be a research and whatever. You wanna shred documents within the neighborhood vicinity. You wanna have very like benign, really benign industrial uses within the first band. And then within the second band around neighborhoods, maybe it's a little bit more intense, the use is a little more intense, but still, you know, in the comfort level of the board. Maybe the third layer out, you know, I don't think that would necessarily be what Staris was proposing at the time, but maybe it is that, that most ex, that extreme intense use on the third band out or fourth band out. So it was just trying to, and, and I don't think the bylaw we can create now, we've always struggled with creating those bands. But in the meantime, we have a definition that's a catch-all and it's bringing in things from like, you know, could be benign light used to something that we would classify as a radiation facility.
We used to have industrial A, B, and C, and probably one of them closer to the re- residence wasn't as detrimental. But yeah, the one with the Staris building used to be a manufacturer of like moldings. And then they leave and then you get this radiation facility that they don't have any of them in the United States. So like Harry said, it was becoming a catch-all.
So are we just talking about that one specific use? Being a radiation facility or are we talking about like, I keep hearing the name Staris.
Well, you just don't know what's gonna come.
But
I, I think that's the problem is it's being used as a catch-all, right? And, and we really can't have any catch-all. So, you know, in any of the industrial areas, any type of catch-all is going to cause problems.
So right now, the light manufacturing definition says fabrication, processing, packaging, or assembly operations applying, employing only electric or other substantially noiseless and inoffensive motor power, utilizing hand labor or quiet machinery and processes and free from neighborhood disturbing agents such as odors, gas, fumes, smoke, cinders, refuse matter, electric, electromagnetic radiation, heat vibration, or noise. Further, all operations are located entirely within an enclosed building and there is no outside storage of materials or finished goods. So I guess what, the reason why I'm scratching my head is I have never seen a definition that protects neighborhoods better than this definition for light manufacturing. So you have built into this definition, um, all of the things that it cannot be. And that is not typical. So that's why I'm like, I don't know how I can possibly um, improve on this definition. Because it's already telling us all the things that aren't gonna be allowed.
Right, it came to the planning board. If we were told, or the planning board at the time was told that this was a light manufacturing facility.
It was processing.
Right.
Yeah, because it fit, like it always magically fits into some sort of manipulative. I feel like you, like it gets turned into a pretzel and somehow fits. Like, so somehow a radiation facility with two electron beams fit into that definition. I don't know.
Because it's not neighborhood, uh, emitting. It doesn't emit anything because you have twelve-foot thick walls. So if you build twelve-foot thick walls, you could have just about anything you want. Not that there, that makes sense cost-wise. For most industries, it wouldn't be necessary, but, but the idea that it wasn't a neighborhood emitting, uh, radiation facility because they had twelve-foot thick walls.
But it's the problem really the definition, though. I mean, that, that's where I'm.
Yeah.
I, I, like, I don't know how to improve upon this definition. Um, because you're already, you're already saying that pretty much you can't have any impacts. Um, so.
Right, and, and I guess that was the, the crux of it is that it wouldn't, it didn't, it would have been allowed. They, they consider it an allowed use because it, it built the walls that didn't have those impacts. The use it says itself is a radiation producing facility, which shouldn't be allowed. But if you, it's not neighborhood emitting. It didn't emit any radiation because of the walls. So you could have all the noise you wanna make, but if you can build something around it that doesn't emit the noise, then you can do it. It's kind of the way that definition reads, as long as it's not neighborhood disturbing.
I, and I guess I don't see the problem with that, I, I suppose. I mean, if, if nobody is being disturbed by the noise, um, because they're containing it all within this, this facility, then, um, why not?
I, I think that, that would have been less objectionable. I think it was the radiation that was concerning the neighborhood.
Because eventually concrete.
And, and the concrete, and the concrete plant that had to be built, which would have been noise disturbing.
But remember, you're also going through, so right now, light manufacturing is a special permit use, right? Uh, let me just double check that. So it's a special permit use and it's going through site plan review. So once again, I mean, I don't think that you want to prohibit manufacturing
Oh, no.
occurring within the industrial district. So I I question whether the issue is really the definition. I mean, I, I think that there are a lot of protections through the special permit criteria, through site plan review. Um, the definition is just explaining, it's just classifying the use. So I, I, I would encourage just leaving the definition alone because, uh, like I said, I, I just can't think of how I would improve upon it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think I disagree with that. I just, I think we just, we found ourselves in a bit of a, a, a jam because in some ways it was definitely clear, but in other ways there seemed to be a workaround.
So what about, can, can we, I know I'm, I'm, I'm the new guy here, so I can ask these stupid questions. Um, can we create a definition that's not allowed? Right? So if we create a heavy manufacturing definition or radiation facility definition and then say it's just not allowed.
We, we actually have that. It's, radiation is.
Well, I know there, there's actually a separate thing about no radiation period in any, in any zone, in any area, but I'm, I'm thinking, you know, a specific, like something with a, a use ta, in the use table that says not allowed.
I think we have prohibited uses now, right?
So if it's not in the use table as being an allowed use, then it's automatically, uh, prohibited use. So that's, that's the.
Again, this facility was, was put into a, a, a light manufacturing that's, you know, when, when you're talking something that requires a twelve-foot concrete cube around it, is it exactly light manufacturing?
That's, that, that in itself became where we got jammed up.
It always seemed like we were always told if not permitted, then prohibited. But nothing ever was really prohibited because it fell into the bucket of contractor yard or industrial manufacturing or.
Yeah.
Where is our list of prohibited uses now?
It's at the beginning somewhere. I don't have my book. It's probably in like the second sec. I know it was G.
Remember that from last year, Amy?
I think, I think it was like two years ago now.
Whoa, yeah.
I know it's somewhere near the beginning of the book when it talks about permitted and. I know it's somewhere near the beginning of the book when it talks about permitted and prohibited uses.
I usually have my stuff right here, but not today.
Um, okay.
Yeah, it's, um, seven oh five ten, page seven twenty-seven, um, G prohibited uses. But again, I mean, you can use the same. The same reference that, that Millie mentioned where, you know, you build a wall around it, and now it's not obnoxious anymore.
That list of prohibited uses was like a standard list that I found in a lot of other towns. But I think if there's something specific, we could add to it.
Hey, the problem is, so Lori, I understand your point. What, what more could we do that to, to that definition? On the flip side, like, we don't even know what to dream up next, like, what? What else could be, what else could fit in there that we can't even dream of? And then, it's, it's always like reactive, so how do we be proactive? And I guess just fundamentally, we didn't agree with the, the zoning determination on that one, so. We, if we don't understand how you can possibly think a radiation facility fits into light manufacturing, there's something, there's a disconnect there, but. I don't, I don't know, is that just an interpretation thing that can't be fixed? Or, and what happens if that's the case? Because I, I mean, it's, we can't. What do we do in that case?
Well, I mean, there's always the interpretation issue. So, um, you know. Right now, the way our zoning book works is it says that the zoning enforcement officer interprets the zoning bylaw. So, his interpretation is the interpretation that matters by law. Um, so of course, the appeal authority for any building inspector's interpretation is the zoning board of appeals. Um, so if you don't agree with what he says, then there is that authority who can overrule the building inspector. Um. But, I mean, I have gone through many, many building inspectors in my professional career. And I can tell you that every single time there's a new building inspector. Um, we have to work through the interpretation issue. Um, so when I first started working here. And still, you know, I, I meet regularly with, uh. With Fred and with Bob, and we talk through uses. And, uh, get on the same page with interpretation. Um, and there are times when we don't agree, certainly. And it kinda, well, two people think it's this way, and one person thinks it's this way, and then we just. Discuss until we can kinda all get on the same page. Um, so that's the way it's been working, but I don't. I don't think that there is a way to craft definitions that are interpretation proof. Um, it's just, it's just always gonna be an issue just because, you know, we all have different perspectives. And we approach language in a different way. So I, I personally think this definition is, uh, really, really. A solid definition, uh, so I would encourage, uh, to leave the definition alone. Um, and, uh, you know. Like I said, you know, we do regularly meet to talk about these things. Um, so. But, uh, that's not to say that we're not gonna have a, a problem in the future, and unfortunately. Not having a crystal ball, it's really hard to, um, you know. Guess at what uses are, are gonna come down the pike in the future.
So, say we're in an instance where we do have an interpretation issue, and the planning board doesn't agree. And then the ZBA is the overriding authority, does the plant, would we as the board go to the ZBA, or?
You know, I think, uh. It might be a little awkward, like, I, I think, uh, the first thing that I would like to do is. Uh, kinda have the conversation privately. You know, amongst ourselves, and then with the building inspector. Um, and then see if we can come to a consensus. But ultimately, yes, the ZBA is the appeal authority for the building inspector. Um, so. If, if you felt strongly enough, then that would be an option available is to. To appeal the decision to the ZBA and see where they go.
As a board, not as a resident.
As a board, yep.
Hmm, okay, I'm willing to concede, I, 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 maybe it's just trying to. Over engineer something we can't. Any board thoughts on that? Anyone feel differently, or?
No, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see Lori's point.
At least now we see a path, like, I think we were stuck before, we weren't really given a path. Of what we could do if we didn't agree.
Right. Alright, okay, so that is no longer. Um, let's see, the other one, so then I think what we're left with, um, we have the. Groundwater, what do we want to do for groundwater? So Fred's not here this time around, it's an outstanding item. Is he back for the next time around, December sixth?
He will be, yes.
Okay, so do we want to save it for when Fred's back? Did anyone who. Hadn't seen a groundwater meeting before, take a look at one, or have any thoughts they want to share at this point, or do you want to wait till Fred's back next week?
Rather wait for Fred to be back. I, I sort of hate, you know, he's the one in charge of that, I hate talking behind his back, not that he can't watch the meeting, but he's not here to defend himself.
And I think some of it, it's not even him, like, I, I think Fred is, you know, good, you know, good. Engineer, but some of it goes back to what we were talking about with. The, the Mr. Dinesky, Attorney Dinesky, and, you know, what I heard from the other town is. They use an expert when they get a big project. Because no one's expected to use, you know, that much detail.
Yeah, I sort of liked that idea as well, when that came out, so.
And I, I totally encourage that, you know, and Fred and I have had the conversation particularly with regards to traffic. And Fred is not a traffic engineer, and so. I, I think, uh, he definitely was open to going to a third-party reviewer. When it comes to complicated traffic, um, projects, projects that are gonna generate a lot of traffic, so. I, I think that that would be very appropriate for us to do so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially, I think, with complicated groundwater ones too. Because we did go through a peer review for Staris, and their groundwater wasn't as close to as complicated as Bartlett is. And that peer reviewer found extra items that he thought we should add.
That's right.
You know, because there are some people who just specialize in groundwater.
Yep. Okay, anything else on bylaws to cover tonight, or should we go over to rules and regs? Okay.
I'm gonna have to plug in, so I'm gonna go off for a minute, um, while I plug in, one sec.
Okay, um, so if everyone pulls up the rules and regs, I know we went through a lot of this already. I think this is pretty much in a good spot, outside of, we're gonna approach, I think, fees, where we're doing fees separately.
There were a couple little minor things added after design review meeting, and Lori was gonna talk to them.
Oh, sure.
Because we were updating the design review check sheet, and one of the things that we found is. A lot of the applicants don't include like the utilities that are on the buildings. And the utilities being put on the front. Don't look as good as putting them on the side, so some of the projects that look really nice end up with. Utility boxes all over the front of the building, and it was Dario who noticed it. And Dario said, you should have something in the check sheet that. We show the utilities, and then you just ask them if they can just move them to the side of the building. Because they're always gonna want to put it on the front, because it's the shortest route and quickest and easiest.
Hmm.
But it makes a big difference in the way the building looks. So there are a couple things on the site plan check sheet. That we wanted to add, but to add them, you also had to add them to the planning board rules and regs, because they have to match.
Got it. Okay, so are you gonna call those out, or Lori, you gonna call those out?
Uh, I can call those out, so it's on page twenty-second, uh, twenty-two. Um. So this is under the design review, so these are. Uh, in cases under, uh, B one, in cases involving changes to existing buildings under letter, letter A. We wanted to specify. Um, so when we were talking about photos of existing buildings showing the location of proposed alterations, renovations. And of adjacent, uh, buildings and properties, just to, to clarify. What those photos should show, under letter B. Drawing showing exterior elevations, including utilities such as boxes, meters, and hookups. Uh, a perfect example of this, actually, there's a duplex that I drive by every single day. And they ended up putting the, um, tanks for propane. Right on the front elevation, I, I can't even believe it, it's so distracting. Every time I drive by, I'm like, oh no, look at those ugly tanks. Um, yeah, so then under number two, so this is, uh, pretty much the same language. Uh, in cases involving construction of new buildings, so under B. Showing the utilities, and then, uh, under G, photographs of adjacent buildings and properties. Um, so then the only other change, uh, that I made. On this version of the regulations is on page nineteen. Under site plan review. So this has to do with comprehensive parking and traffic circulation plan. Uh, the wave of the future, actually, I believe Amy suggested this. Um, provisions for electronic vehicle charging stations.
It was from the class I went to on planning board rules and regulations. And they said a lot of the towns, now at least their town, this was on Westboro. They were adding for so many parking spaces, you have to do so many charging stations. They had like five charging stations for every hundred spaces. So if it was a big facility like Northbrook Crossing, or. You know, someone who had like one parking space or two parking spaces, they wouldn't have to put in a charging station, but. It's something that they would have to take into account now.
So then out of my staff meeting this morning, um. The fire chief made a suggestion, uh, for the common driveway. Um, so this is gonna be on the next version of the rules and regs for the public hearing. I didn't want to keep giving you versions, and I thought that maybe there might be some additional things that come up between now and then. So I figured I'd wait, uh, and give it this to you for the December sixth public hearing. Um, but under common driveway. Uh, I wanted to add a letter P. Sign posted at the intersection of the common driveway in the street, displaying the name of the common driveway and indicating common drive. Um, so what we had discussed, the fire chief, the DPW director. Uh, the assistant assessor and I, is that from now on, every time there is a common driveway. It should have the words common drive included within the name. So he wanted me to memorialize that in the rules and regs, so I thought that was a good suggestion. And that's it, that's all I got.
Okay, and so wait, the, the public hearing for the rules and regs is December sixth?
Correct, yep.
And the public hearing for the zoning bylaws is January seventeen?
Yes, we haven't started advertising that yet, but that's what we have in the calendar.
Okay, and joint ZBA is January third?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, if you add stuff like the fees, with the fee schedule, will that also be in the sixth public hearing for rules and regs, or no?
It's, we're not gonna be ready for that.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments on that one? Okay, that's great. Then moving on, oh, was that something? Master plan, anything for master plan?
We meet this week, and today's the last day of the survey, so if anybody hasn't done it.
How many do you have now, do you know?
I think, uh, the last tally was five hundred and sixty-one.
I thought we had like over eight hundred last time. Well, maybe that was complete.
That was the complete street survey.
Okay. Um, all right, anything for no A and R lot releases, bonds, any subcommittee updates? Okay, um, so our next planning board meeting is December sixth, it is the only meeting of December. And other than the rules and regs hearing, do we have any other hearings?
We, uh, actually, we have three seventeen Crawford.
Good, okay. Three seventeen Crawford, and let's see, ZBA joint meeting, next ZBA meetings November twenty-second, anything exciting there?
No, so we just have eighty Main Street coming back. Um, and then we have dimensional variance discussion, um, sixty North Gate. So that's the start of a new public hearing.
Oh, it's a ZBA, okay.
Okay.
Is there any other, no minutes tonight, we're all caught up with minutes?
Um, I've got the minutes late, uh, so I did, uh, finish reviewing them. I, late yesterday afternoon, but I didn't think it was fair to give those to you, so to the planning board meeting, so. I decided to hold off on those until the next meeting.
Okay, all right, well then, if there is no further business, is there emotional adjourn?
I'm gonna.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Millie?
I.
No?
I.
Anthony?
I.